Right, thank you everyone. Get settled here. We'll now call the city council meeting to order for April the 11th, 6 p.m. Please rise to the invitation and pledge your allegiance.
While we think for this night, Lord, we just watch your whole spirit in this meeting, while we ask to two grains, and everyone, each and everyone with wisdom tonight, Lord. We ask that your will be done here tonight, while we ask the peace in this meeting, Lord. Jesus name we praise, while we, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the people for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, please call and roll.
Here, Councilmember McHire, here. Councilmember Taylor, here. Deputy Mayor Bernard, here.
Here.
You have a form.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome County Commissioner Kevin Roberts, District One. Meeting tonight, we saw his face out there, so thank him for coming. First item up. Oh, Scott, didn't see you back there, sorry about that. We got a full house. First up, under citizens and outside agencies, I see stormwater issues on East Lakeview Drive. If Mr. Reed can give us an overview of what's going on out there?
Well, this started back a while back when we had a telephone pole installed from COVID.
What did you try to speak of? The crown.
This happened a while back. When a telephone pole was placed in front of COVID days, COVID drainage, you know, blocking the drainage, starting to run around telephone pole. So I got with the EBI to get them to come out and get some input from them on the system over there. And Tal, I came up with a solution to reroute the water, so ran down the north side, south side of the road. So we installed this. And along came that hailstorm, the pot water, or sawed up, running around the drain. At this time, looking at possibly just put a catch basin in there. On top, and then opening inside, it slowly flowed out, so it washed out so fast. Tal said that he didn't see anything wrong with what happened, and they're gonna account for something of that nature at that time. And it was probably the cheapest way we've done it, okay, to save the city money.
The improvements that you're talking about is that was outlined by Polson in the memo that we all received?
Yes, there's a memo, I had Polson come out afterwards to evaluate. What had been done there, price basically, and what it would cost. They agreed with the power pole that way, they also agreed with what I had done, help eventually on water the other way. They also said that if they were to come in there and do it, it'd be six to seven basins, calculations, where you're looking at about fifteen to thirty-five thousand in survey and fees, anywhere from a hundred to two hundred thousand, depending on scope of work.
Okay. So in your opinion, is that what it's gonna take to fix this problem, or should we try what we have, or what?
I think we should look at that for now, see what we have, and go ahead and look at possibly getting engineers to see where we want to go with the prices.
Okay.
But as of right now, like I said, they're saying, you know, anywhere from a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Just to get it stalled.
Okay. Mr. Gordon Lewis tonight? If you'll come up with microphones. Can you give your name, Andrew?
My name is Donald Gordon, nine eighteen South Palmer Avenue.
Yes, sir.
And the big thing with this with me is, I'm not worried about what's there now, I just want a problem fixed, because dang it, the rainy season is coming, and they ain't got it yet.
Sure.
Now, I understand what Mr. Rick just saying now, I ain't no use of me coming up in a path with blame on my bike, or anything else. I just wanna get together and see if we can fix the problem, because what we got there now, that ain't gonna work. That is not gonna work, I'm talking about the saw being from the hill, that water gonna push that round, that saw right on down. So we can just come up with a solution, and everybody work together, and get this figured out.
Sure.
Let's fix the problem, but that ain't, that's not up for that one.
Very good.
My name is Brenda Gray, I live at fourteen East Lakeview Drive, on the, you know, the south side, where he's talking about the pole leaders in front of the,
Right.
the thing.
Yes.
When the wind, when the rain came the other day, the water came down so fast, that it was all in my yard, and even in my driveway. And I just, I did some research on this, and everybody's been telling me it was the driveway, it was this, and it was that, come to find out, this drainage that's coming off of Memorial Drive and Cal-Magritte Boulevard. So, and I'm assuming that when he said that he's going to unstop the thing that's, where the pole is at, then that, how the water know it's supposed to go on the north side?
If it's downhill, then where it go? No, I didn't, I didn't unstop it, I removed it so that it is no longer coming up at that telephone pole across the property. I diverted the flow as well into the pipeline out from that. And that covert is, that covert is concreted in a little bit, so there's no water, there's no water, that basin has even been removed, that was sending the water to your place, so technically, they took some of the flow off of your property.
Okay, so let me ask you one other question. So when you're putting, you said the basin is going to be put there, is that gonna be on the south, on the south side, where the Tupperware home is?
No, it's gonna be right across from your driveway, at the end of Donald's, where the, where the open covert is currently, there's a catch basin put there.
I mean, catch basin, that's what I'm thinking.
Yes, ma'am, I know.
Okay.
So historically, the, the water, where your, where your new house is placed, the whole, the water normally flows through there historically, right?
Well, normally, there was, there used to be a covert there, and swell there prior to her house being there.
Right, that was just a vague.
And that's just a natural way that that water runs, it's spread on a, the more, the flow comes from both directions on the border, and it also comes down, on top. So that water funnels, that's a funnel, down that road, so it's been an ongoing issue.
Sure.
But what we did wasn't solve that whole issue, it was because the telephone pole, and it put it, it's gonna fall, and it will look for that water to go, the water went straight up the air, basically, we can open it up. We rerouted it, and put some of the water on that side.
Sure. Then your house got completed when?
Two thousand nineteen.
You know about what time in two thousand nineteen?
October.
October, so that was after rainy season, so you've only had one rainy season since that completed?
Twenty, twenty-one, yes.
So you had two solid rains, so during, during any time during those two rainy seasons, did it flood?
Yes, it just didn't go into my driveway, this was the last time, well, when the last, when the hailstorm came, that's when the water went into my driveway. The, the week before that, it was five inches from my drive, from, from my garage, not talking about the driveway, from being in the garage.
Okay.
And this time, it went in the garage.
Okay. All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. So the recommended changes, I believe you said that you wanted to survey what was there now, and add a catch basin, though I heard correctly?
Yeah, meantime, we can look to get the policy, and give us our price on what it's priced, what it would take to do that.
Would any of these funds be able to be used as the grant that we got for the stormwater? Well, I have to look, I don't know what the stormwater, not pull, pull the law over, but we'll look at. And just to add to Rick, the owner of EBI said that he believes that maybe not alleviate everything out there, because it started on Memorial, as the engineer said, probably when they put down that walkpath, helped anything. But he does believe it would have had time to take root, that obviously wouldn't have washed out, and it would have worked better. And he suggests we put it back, and so the Polson, and then like Rick said, then we can look further on what we can do out there, and obviously, the cost, you see that it could be, hopefully, some of that rescue, American Rescue money there, helps out there, so. So we're gonna put back the way it was, right here, not the way it was, the way EBI finished it with the,
So we're gonna add a catch basin.
Right. And we'll see how well that works, and also work with Polson to get the funds to do everything tomorrow. Very good, any questions from the council?
I, I do think we should move forward with that, get your hair to get off, and seriously, look at, we should.
I have a question, so. I have a question, um, this is for, uh,
Speaking, speaking to microphone, Ray.
Was this something that was requested, or this is something that the city thought needed to be done?
This is something that had to be done, because the stormwater guy saw Marshall telephone pole there rain, and nothing we could do, other than reroute it. So when we rerouted, we knew that there was an issue, starting, you know, with the flood of, of water, and it's going down that street. So when we redid it, we just upside it, to take a little more of the flood off of that road. Up at the city's bar.
Any other questions? We haven't made sure. I don't think you, okay, yes.
Just taking aside, we have a division in the code on stormwater, you know, stem. Might not think that, as you size, having a stormwater tolling, helping build up funds to do a lot more work, and plan for, maybe master plans, that's gonna, that could do a few more than most of them.
Something we'll consider in the future? Anything else on this issue? Seeing none? Moving on to item number five, speeding consent agenda, have minutes from March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. We have a motion. Make your motion, we're going to, uh, item number five. You have a motion, there are second?
There's a second.
Any questions or changes? Seeing none, we'll call it all.
Councilmember McGuire, yes. Councilmember McHire, yes. Councilmember Taylor, yes. Deputy Mayor Bernard, yes.
Yes. Yes. Thank you, item number six, we have the virtual building lease slash transfer, agree?
So, it's nearly completed, um, said one issue that came up, and we have a discussion, they wanted to remove the city from having the, in say, the duty to rebuild the facility. So it used to say, city orders developer, can terminate this agreement by providing the other party thirty days notice. They've mentioned the city, that's, so now it's just developer, can terminate this agreement by providing the city thirty days notice. And I believe the reason for that is, the, the city, if you receive where the funds, we, we receive the proceeds, these, we want controllers, make sure the reconstruction is done appropriately, and so on. This is all, by the way, just, just during the period when they have a lease, that period is gonna be considered a fee.
Right.
But, um, and so I understand the circumstances, but I told them it was something I couldn't agree to, to sustain and change, but we agreed to at the last meeting. But I, I can't say that I, that I would disagree with that perspective. Now, I think that there is a way, probably a way, to have both parties be able to terminate the agreement, but certainly, they, they would feel more comfortable that we did not terminate the agreement, unless they got a portion of the proceeds as well. Because they're gonna have some time and effort and expenses associated with their building, sometimes, during the lease, rebuilding, building the units, and so on, this building. And they're not gonna wanna get that up, if we terminate it, hold on to the proceeds.
Sure, so basically, the issue is that they could spend every last dime, and be, you know, one day away from opening, fire comes, burns down the building, city gets the insurance money, city has the ability to cancel the contract at that point, they basically have no recourse for recouping that money that was spent.
Sounds like a lost will, yeah. So, yeah, that's basically it, so like I said, I, I can't disagree with this perspective on that.
Any questions on that? All right. Anyone wish to make a motion?
If you want to make a motion, it'd be to approve the change to contract, that would be the changes to contracts, the one that you have, I, I went ahead and made it the way they requested it. So the one we have in the package would be the final lease.
Make your motion, we're going to approve item number six. Second, we have a motion, second, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call it all.
Councilmember McGuire, yes. Councilmember McHire, yes. Councilmember Taylor, yes. Deputy Mayor Bernard, yes.
You know, I'm saying, it's my previous working relationship with the development.
So I'm simply gonna produce a PDM with this signature, send it out, it'll, it'll come from the city, I'm gonna produce a PDM.
All right, sounds good. Item number seven, we have the fan airport management agreement. Mark? Clary, would you give us the overview here?
Good evening, mayor and members, I'm Lord Clary, for those of you that have met me before, and I'm Strategic Financial Advisor to the city. One of the who's listed a proposal and subsequent advertising for the airport, moving to a overall management agreement right now, and ultimately, to a long-term lease. The status, as we have it right now, I don't know if you're gonna put this up, or senior packet, if you'd like to look at it. It's a powerful presentation. The council approved the lease back in August. We had subsequent discussions with part, part of transportation and Federal Aviation Administration. And based on those conversations, they requested that we look at essentially taking a little different approach to this. We brought that back to the council in a later discussion earlier this year, and breaking it into two pieces. One would be a management agreement, which would take effect now, and the other would be a long-term lease, with more flexibility, which would be applied to the Federal Aviation Administration, once approved, to be approved by the city. So today, we're talking about a management agreement. At this point, your city team, which is myself, the city manager, your finance director, Mr. Burr, your council, as well as our outside council, Dave Leonard, which is on Zoom today. We've worked on a management agreement, and put that together, shared it with part of airport management for their review, we had probably three or four back and forth on that, and brought this team today. And it essence has a recommended management agreement. There's also a budget in exhibit C, and exhibit G, it's part of our, I'll go over it in a minute. A management agreement means you're still in charge of the airport, you're essentially hiring a manager. And that manager will take and do things like run your fly operations, take care of all the airport facilities, support operations and maintenance, they'll take care of the grants to the airport. Need procurement, they'll assist you with, and essentially, run those processes for you, for the airport. They'll also provide part-time staff, such as an airport director, and airport grounds, maintenance supervisor, or finance director, and also a planner for that, which they'll go through in more detail later. You'll still be approving most items associated with this, including any changes to the layout of the airport. And they may propose some things to you, that may be aeronautical uses, that would use runways, aprons, et cetera, hangers. They also may propose some things that are non-aeronautical, such as warehouses, or other types of operations, may not have aeronautical operations, that's your layout, okay? So you have to tell RDT and FAA, you're gonna change that layout for the usage, and that'll be part of things will be approved. Also, recommend an annual budget to you, which you'll have an opportunity to review and make changes, or sign off annually, as part of your annual budget process. So just run through the normal process, but FAM will be presenting it to you. Any changes to the master plan, as far as what's out there, new buildings, any changes in that, would be, would come to you for approval, as far as capital projects, and also the master plan. Any grant applications, which would have to be approved, obviously, we can also as well, just like you did today. And this will continue until we go to the long-term lease. So this would be in effect, it's a twenty-year agreement, but we don't anticipate a FAM twenty-year, we anticipate the other agreement essentially replacing it, as soon as it can be done. So the initial budget that has been brought forward is essentially through the end of your current fiscal year, at the end of September. And there are some amendments to that budget, to essentially add three line items, one is a management fee. The second one is pest control, and wildlife control, which are things that really are going along out there today, we're separating matters time items, and the required command shows. It would be different, the line items, if you had a, today. The management fee will address those part-time salaries for FAM, as well as their insurance, as well, if they're able to require to provide. So we have some recommended actions, and Chair, I didn't know if you wanted to hear from FAM, or if you want to consider that, or how you want to approach it.
Uh, I would say go ahead with the, the recommended actions, and allow FAM to do a presentation.
Item one is to approve the airport management agreement, that was presented in your overall package. Item two would be to approve the changes to the budget, that were recommended as part of exhibit G. Item three is to authorize FAM and the city to apply for the FAA airport overall investment, that's essentially the long-term lease. And item four would essentially do a grant that you would apply for, to pay for additional costs that are required on your side of the ledger, to accomplish that long-term lease. Which would be things like a land appraisal, additional survey work out there, as far as a layout, and those types of items. As well as updating environmental work, and those types of things, because what you wanna do is have an environmental break, between the city responsibility and the FAM responsibility at the point of that long-term lease. In addition, it would pay for your outside accounts, or model, through that brand, that would be to authorize the city manager to apply for that, that brand. Okay, so those are the four items.
All right. Do you have any questions for Mr. Clary at this point? Okay. JT, like the opportunity to present for us, and give an overview of what you intend to do in this next twelve months or so.
Absolutely, hello, councilman, I'm here, thanks for letting me be here today, it's been a long journey to get here, and a lot of hard work, so. We, there's a lot of internal work through our operational readiness and transition plan, and we'll be executing right away, as far as, and I'll let our, my fellow through that, we bring up some kind of fantastic facility, and to go in a little more detail on that. But I will say that the presentation that we want to share today, as we shared with Ed Doc last Thursday, in your current master plan, you have ten years of capital improvement projects that just weren't sought after, which came to about seventeen point four million. Now, we will try to include estimation costs, we will get enrolled to JCP program, the joint, I mean, capital improvement program, and we'll help that, that they prioritize those, in order of safety and security on down, and try to recruit as much of that seventeen and a half million if we can, and then maybe, so that, that's what we have in the next thirty-four, five days. We won't hear from, back until after this will be, but those will be other kind of, we need to, bring new tenants out to the airport, and also getting in a department to, you know, clients, that's more than what we actually need to do out there. We're gonna overview what's required, because we have a lot of asset development right now, we have a lot of asset, so that's, and it really is gonna shine well.
All right, specifically on bringing new business out there, what, what does that look like in the next twelve months?
Great question, so, you know, we took a survey of all the current tenants out there, and I think we surveyed at least eighty percent of all the tenants, and outside general maintenance, I didn't say all were a restaurant, right, so we, we're smoking airports, and have the O T, numbers already. Of course, in the immediate future, we'll be to bring in the biomass, American dent manufacturing, working together with USD, a lot of people out there. And then, working with Department of Forest Management now for a few years, we've got, our government affairs, right, here today, Thomas Hoffs, if you have a question on that. Trying to bring a single location research center, which we fully stocked on time to meet. And then also, we have a, a speed work together, which is the five dollar various projects, we're bringing climate control, two one thirty, so, sort of thing from the other, working with our allies, what's our other countries that are going to train out of the, on that. So those are kind of like, those are projects we've been working on now for the last twenty months, or, you know, at this point, and those are also ongoing.
As far as construction with the family of companies that you control, what sort of construction do you guys have planned in the next twelve months up there?
That'll all depend on what funding opportunities, what projects are approved by F and FAA, but we are not, we do not anticipate on the end of contractors will be able to join second, so we're looking at our home, our policies.
Is anything preventing them from leasing any portion of the airport during this time, before the big agreement has come through?
No, sir, we would do a separate agreement for that, if they need to lease a particular segment of the land, it'd be just like the normal lease, what happened to them.
Okay.
Yes.
Anything else you wanna share? Do you have any questions for JT? All right. JT, we very much appreciate you coming, and you're tired of proof. So, Mr. Clary, do we need to go through and approve item by item?
Uh, I would say yes.
Okay. Do we want to start with the airport management agreement, or would that be less?
I would do that first.
Okay. And as part of that, we're also approving the budget?
Yes.
Okay. So I would ask everyone, do you have any questions on the proposed budget? I don't foresee anyone having any issues with the preliminary application for the grant funds, the AIPP application. Obviously, everyone has spoken in favor of having the, of authorizing city manager to file the FAA grant application for due diligence, for the AIPP application, as well, help recruit some of our costs, or expense at this point. So really, truly, if everyone is okay with the budget, and the airport management agreement, then we're okay to make a motion, so is there any questions on item one and two at this point? Okay. So anyone wish to make a motion to approve items one, two, three, and four?
I would like to, but I also like to be, be honored, if you'd like to. Mayor City, I think, I'll be happy to do it, and make me very happy and proud to do it, but I'll give you the honor, it's so good.
I appreciate that, I'll make a motion to approve items number one, two, three, and four, this would be the approval of the airport management agreement, this would be the approval of the proposed budget, this would authorize preliminary AIPP application. This would also authorize city managers to file the FAA grant application for due diligence on the AIPP application as well. Do we have a second?
I'll be happy to second that.
We have a motion in a second, so we have questions. Seeing none, we'll call it all.
Councilmember McGuire, yes. Councilmember McHire, yes. Councilmember Taylor, yes. Deputy Mayor Bernard, yes.
Yes. Yes. JT, we appreciate your hard work. Brings us to our next item, item number eight, planning and zoning board of tenants. Brings us to our next item, item number eight, planning and zoning board conference.
Christian. Through the tax meeting. We were, council side, post-bond requirements for planning, zoning to allow staff, trying to see if any volunteers would come up after, after the week. We did receive one application from Sabrina Blake. I also spoke with more member Jordan to see if she was still requesting to be appointed, she is. I also spoke with alternate member Hilton, who was willing to take on a more active role and have the whole time of planning.
All right, I'll open it up for discussion from council. You have any questions?
I want to comment, I'll back this. This is Jordan, worked for a long time. Around the city for a long time, but very active at that. No problems, right? Just keep on the board, I think that the, I think the best board brings a lot of knowledge and courage, I like it.
I agree 100%.
Okay. On the reappointment, I see that they're here for three years. Does the council have the ability to cut that short in the future? Does the council have the ability to cut the reappointment term short in the future?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we can add and remove later on. Okay, so obviously, we don't have a huge list of applicants at this point in time. Though I see it would potentially continue with whom we have, but I think that something that we should do, being that the council has changed dramatically in recent years. We should have a meeting from the council to decide what the future of the city planning zone should be. And what our vision would be as a council. And then once we establish where our vision would be as a council, we need to then convey that to the board members. So that they also will keep that vision. And any board members that's not willing to go along with that vision, I think that we should try to consider removing them and replacing people who possibly would. So I think that, you know, we need to continue to be a city that's open for business. We need to continue to be a city that's, that's fair and that treats everyone the same regardless of names or acquaintances. I also think that we need to keep an eye on the future of the city. We need to raise up new leaders that are going to be here for the next 50 years, not previous 50 years. I do think that Avon Park to some degree has spun our wheels, not in a good way. And we need to really keep moving forward and inviting new things to Avon Park. So I, if the council's okay with it, I would like to go ahead and plan that to be on our agenda for an upcoming meeting. Maybe the next meeting or one thereafter. At that meeting, I think it would be good to also have Jeff Schmucker there to give us some insights on planning and zoning. Many of the concerns Ms. Taylor raised, talking about different businesses and different zonings, that sort of thing. Is exactly what we should talk about and come up with a vision as council that you vote on. And like I say, convey that to the board.
I agree with that. First, I'd like to thank Ms. Hilton for funding that offer. I know that that's difficult sometimes for somebody to sit there in the back and watch everybody else working. Sometimes it always helps to appreciate that. I'm sure it knows that I appreciate that and I think that it's a good idea what's involved there. But I think we do need to look forward to the future to make some changes to all of our boards. So one board, we're lucky to have some really good people out there. Stand down, have somebody willing to take a spot, but that one's open. And so that's kind of rare and unusual looking for people. Well, I think we definitely need to look forward to making some changes, you know. Next year or two, to bring some new people on board, get some new ideas. Just wanted to give notice to some of the members that are on there now that expire, you know, only a couple of years. They need to kind of look forward to some changes. And I think that some discussion that the council needs to have been opened before.
Anything else?
Mayor. Are you looking at point was break as an alternate to do a?
Oh, yes, yes. All right, so at our last meeting, did we not approve any of the applicants? Okay. So this would actually be to approve Ms. Jordan, Mr. Cummings, Miller, Mr. Anis, Mr. West. And also approve, what was the name just mentioned? Sabrina Blake for the alternate position. Is anyone here to make that motion, so we'll move. You have a motion, do we have a second? Do you have any other discussions? Seeing none, we'll call roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McHire.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
So Mark, if you'll go ahead and put that on the next agenda for us to discuss, assuming that Mr. Schmucker is available. In the meantime, all the council should be thinking about, please review all of our different zoning, planning and zoning and LDRs. Think about what type of business and generally think about the mood of the cities. So it's very easy to look for a reason to say no, just as easy as this, to look for a reason to say yes. And. Put yourself in their position, think about how you can vote and bring that to the next discussion. All right, item number nine, updates. City manager.
Actually, the city clerk for manager of the library wants to go and work on this.
Yes, sir, I was contacted by Nikki with the Highland County Library System, who first came in. They have a storybook, a pop-up storyline throughout several locations in Avon Park. See all this to add to people experiencing COVID, they're stuck at home. Or an opportunity to come out and do something really company positive, but everything is for literacy and, you know, learning and reading. So we will be able to receive free books when they come up. It's just a great opportunity, so there will be several locations in the city over a three month period.
Do you have any questions on this?
I'd like to see that they won't use the parks and park wells.
Any other questions or comments on that?
Can you explain how it works? I mean, I don't understand how it works.
So members of the city, speaking from its point, with her, she's going to go to the different parks throughout Avon Park. And can be Donaldson Park and Vermont Park. What's with you is these specific times, they will be available to have kids come over and they're going to be prepared to take those. They will also be providing free books to anyone who's a child.
They have the dates, we'll put them out on Facebook and also on Facebook site.
Okay. You have anything further on this?
Okay, question. Christian, how old is it with the DRS? It's going to be over three separate days, over a three month period, over a three month period. And I would be happy to, I don't know them off the top of my head. And it could be more, I'm kind of getting details mixed up, but I'd be happy to send you guys a schedule.
I guess what I'm asking is, is this like once a month, twice a month?
I believe it is once a month. But I have to confirm it, so if I said it, I'd be happy to send you guys a schedule.
Are you guys, I'm speaking.
Yes, ma'am, please give your name and address.
Becky Brown, Highlands County Library System Manager. Library's address is 319 West Sinter Avenue. I am the one that contacted to give these pop-up storytimes. It's through a branch from the Division of Library Information Services of the state of Florida. We're going to do, actually across Highlands County, so not just Avon Park, but the seven that are going there with Avon Park. So we're going to go to the seven different locations. This is kind of our pilot launch of this program. Seven different locations, it's to bridge the gap in literacy, so we saw a lot of students, their test scores got lower during COVID. So we really want to do our best to be where the people are in these books and their kids. So we're going to bring free books, we're going to reach to whoever shows up. And that's the primary goal, is to bridge that gap.
Excellent, do you have any questions for?
Yeah, what age group are we talking about? We are not limiting age groups, so anyone under 18, the parents, everyone can come and listen to the storytimes together. So. Got somebody there, five to 18, you got variety books for those ages, yes we do.
Bye, Chris and Max.
I wish. How long, even doesn't take just an hour? We like to let our participants decide, so if we have a lot of younger children and they are done at 10 or 15, we're going to be done also. But if we see that interest stays longer, we'll stay longer.
Any other questions? Be looking for a motion to approve the pop-up library program. We have a motion, no second. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll call roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember Mr. Dick.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Anything else, Mark?
Just FYI, with our hail damage, I don't know about your lip around the city or any sunwinds, but calling the end of the kind of vehicles. Oh, yeah. Several. Um, we didn't get any name of part ways. I just wanted to give a, we don't know exactly all the damage we have, but every vehicle sitting out here. Behind City Hall was damaged, Randy just got his, looked at and said, just all the dent, so he has like $8,000. And we have several more out at Public Works, there was an insurance appraiser, actually got here around 3 o'clock. David is going out there to check everyone, take pictures and all that. Then we're going to have a separate one coming out, we, David Roberts, the Public Works Supervisor, had sent our maintenance tech Mike stone around, look at all the. The city buildings and what they gave me today, I'll just quickly go through with this. We got the arch window, second floor of City Hall has a broken pane, community center roof has 47 broken spent tiles. The arch window cracked at community center, front facing the street, AC unit top of council chambers dented, condenser coil still functioning. Brick building, actually Dan got me, he went in there, found some water. There was a broken window in the back with the water coming from, reported that up. And also we went on the roof because he called and found something, it was Friday, I guess he got home, he went in. Told me the roof is leaking, we were on the roof today, there's no indication of anything wrong with the roof. It looked as good as the day, they probably put it down, so it probably something, we're getting it somewhere. Public Works screens on windows blew off, Avon Park Public Works letters on the side building broken, gutters on two lane. Lakeside Park Pavilion broken, metal roof on Pavilion. The Community Child Development Center, which we lease out to them, has, it has the most damage, they sent a picture, it looked like somebody opened up with an 16 inch machine gun on it, actually. Expensive siding damage, a bunch of holes in it, metal roofing on walkway, metal roofing on walkway. Roofing on the walkway? Yes. Yeah, I caught it, I have a second to read it, it's on like, but thanks for it.
That was Rick Reed for the.
Shingles missing and two south facing roofs, and he sent a bunch of pictures, again, we're going to have another appraiser out here, we may still find some more.
So we do have the insurance adjuster coming up?
Yes, they just don't know when the second one's coming out. The one for the vehicles is here, but it's maybe coming back. Or he said it'll, it'll take him two to three days minimum, just to do Public Works. And kudos to, well, Rick went out, but to the streets guy, they got Main Street Mall looking pretty good really fast, if you have noticed it, looks right back as good as what looks. They did a really good job. And when I got the call, how bad it was by Anthony who called me up, he was in, actually City Dick, his windshield got all smashed. And Ray told me about his car. I got a little Rick Reed, he had like four or five guys, some of them had their windows blown out of the house, they came out to the city, so.
Yep, I'll give everybody a city kudos, you know, Mark, excuse me, call it 8 o'clock, whatever the time it was after all that went down. And had everybody out running their rounds and checking for damage and clearing trees out of the roads and, you know, you guys did a great job. I really appreciate the fact you sponsored it.
First time, you're welcome.
Absolutely. All right, anything else with the good city?
That being said. I don't know whether, maybe next month, very good time, if we have a plan, we're going to have a street spitting.
Yeah, I'll see when they, when they have the next one coming up.
Anything else?
Uh, yeah, thanks for the breather, I'm passing the two big ones tonight.
All right, any other questions? We know it's in motion to adjourn, to adjourn, please, seeing opposition, we are adjourned.